Okay, it's 7:04, we'll start open this meeting. All the chairman are present. We'll start by transmitting Treasury Warrants 48, 48A, 49, and 49A.
So moved?
Motion made second, all in favor? Unanimous. We also have some amendments to approve from our meetings of March 8th, 2010, March 22nd, 2010, and May 24th, 2010. Have motion approve all three of those unless there's a question, take up? Motion so moved?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous? Okay, our first appointment for 7 o'clock was Vincent Cameron, General Manager, Reading Municipal Light Department, for the extension of the 20-year agreement as authorized by Article 19 of the May 1st, 2010 Annual Town Meeting. Mr. Cameron, how you doing?
Good, yourself?
Good, thanks. Seems like yesterday I was here just explaining the 20-year agreement extension.
Yeah, on May 1st, I attended the town meeting in Wilmington, and I believe that there was a vote to authorize the selectmen to extend the 20-year agreement. I don't know if you've taken that vote yet?
We have not.
Okay. The, what I have is what they call a memorialization. And what it is, is it's a description of how each one of the four towns has renewed the extension of the 20-year agreement. And there's also a space for each one of the selectmen to sign. The RMLD Board has already signed, the Reading Selectmen have signed except for one selectman. And what I had told Mr. Cairo was that I was, I wanted to come around once the selectmen had taken the vote to get the memorialization signed. All this, the votes on their own stand. The memorialization is just a one-page document that says, here's the whole thing right here. Here's what everybody did as far as the extension goes, and everybody signed just one sheet. So that's, I guess, why I'm here tonight.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, the Board would need to vote as authorized by the town meeting Article 19 to sign the extension agreement. That should happen if the Board so chooses, and then as Mr. Cameron indicated, you can sign the official document that's available. Could you maybe read what it says, Vinnie?
We're aware that on May 1st, 2010, the Wilmington Annual Town Meeting voted to authorize the Wilmington Board of Selectmen to execute an extension for 10 years of the agreement dated July 9th, 1990. That's what's, that's what's on this.
Okay.
And that's similar, Mr. Chairman, to what we signed in the past, and this is all method scrutiny of Town Council through his approval of the town meeting warrant.
Okay. Before I ask for questions or comments, I'd also like to recognize our, Mr. George Hooper, he is here, our representative on the Reading Municipal Light Department Board.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is Phil Casino, Commissioner of the Reading Municipal Light Department.
Thank you.
The Senior Commissioner.
Phil was around to actually help negotiate this back in the day.
Part of the negotiating team, the original 20-year agreement.
Okay. Any questions or comments, or motions from the Board?
Just if I may ask quickly, so this would, if we elected to approve this, it would come up, it would expire hypothetically in 2020? Is that?
2030.
2030, okay. Thank you.
But we need to give it literally 10 years, in 10-year increments.
Leafs, okay.
Because if we ever decided not to, not to continue, it would probably take at least that long to get the towns situated with another electric service.
Sure.
I make a motion that the Town of Wilmington enter an agreement of the extension of the 20-year agreement as authorized by Article 19 of the May 1st, 2010 Annual Town Meeting, the Town of Wilmington and the Reading Municipal Light Department.
Second. You have a motion made in second, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. You want to sign that?
You want to sign it now, or I can pick it up tomorrow?
We could sign it now if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Might be just as easy. Can you get us a copy of that? Once it's complete, you'll get us a full copy, right?
Yeah. Once everybody signs, all the four towns will get a copy of the original.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your work you've done on this, too.
Well, I'd like to thank the Town of Wilmington, they've been a great partner with the, for the RMLD.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Now, right on time on our 7:10 appointment. Michael Skidell, the Health, Safety, and Environment Supervisor at Lubrizol Advanced Materials, request of new 207 Lowell Street Howland Development to increase above-ground storage of combustible products at Lubrizol Advanced Materials 207 Lowell Street. Mr. Skidell, evening.
Thank you. We were here in the fall of last year. We were requesting the expansion of our flammable and combustibles license. We hadn't had all the upgrades done to the sprinkler system, and so we put it on hold, and all the work has been completed. The Deputy Chief is here to verify that that has happened, so we are ready now to make the request for the expansion of our combustibles and flammable license.
Okay.
Yes.
Do we have any?
We do.
I also would like to recognize Deputy Chief Cockman down here in the back there.
And you have the cards first, right?
Do you need the greens or the slips?
The green cards.
There are still six outstanding that are sitting at the town post office. They weren't able to deliver them today. And this address, same as last year, is no such person.
Is it proof?
Same as December of last year. Came back. It says improper address in the town post office, tried their best to find them.
Okay.
I would bring the other six over probably tomorrow, the next day.
Mr. Chairman, in response to your question, we had a memorandum from Mr. Spall, Inspector of Buildings, indicating that there are no outstanding zoning issues at this location. And as you mentioned, Deputy Corcoran is here from the Fire Department. We have a memorandum to the Board from Fire Chief Bradbury indicating that Lubrizol has made significant improvements to the fire sprinkler system at 207 Lowell Street. They've installed a 1,000 GPM fire pump, gallons per minute fire pump, added in-rack sprinkler heads, replaced old pipe with increased diameter pipe, and replaced existing heads with an early suppression fast-response sprinkler head system. With the modifications, the sprinkler system complete, and the engineering affidavits received by the Wilmington Fire Department, the Department has no objection to the increase in storage capacity. And again, Deputy Corcoran is available to answer any questions the Board may have on this.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments from the Board?
There was so much substantive information here that I'd actually missed, just a clerical question here. Who is the applicant on this? It's Lubrizol Advanced Materials Inc., right? The other references are just to the address.
Yes.
And then with respect to the substance, there's a lot of information here, and certainly this is one of those cases, I think, we rely heavily on the Fire Department, in this case, Deputy Chief and Chief Bradbury. And if they have no objections to it, I don't, I don't see anything here that raises a concern as long as our Fire Department is satisfied that we have a safe situation.
Mike, I tried to give you as much information as possible. If I overloaded you on that, I apologize. I wanted you to see the work.
Yeah, sometimes less is more, but in this particular case, I think more was, was better. No, it's not a criticism.
I tend to concur with you, Mr. Newhouse, that there's lots of information, and as I poured through it, frankly, I'm not a chemist, so I read through it, and a lot of the words are over my head. But what the words do to me is they make me like, wow, what is this stuff? You know? I start questioning, you know, it raised the question in my head is, what does Lubrizol do? And so I did a little bit of research today, and I have a general idea, but I didn't know if you might want to take two or three minutes to sort of give us the bullet of what the company's involved in, and what's happening in Wilmington, and just, I wouldn't mind having, it has no bearing, I'm deferring to the experts here on approving of the construction, but I'm interested in what the company's about.
My plant manager, Ron Conte, is here, I'd like to have him speak on that if I could.
Lubrizol Advanced Materials is a division of Lubrizol Incorporated, which is a corporation based in Cleveland, Ohio. The Wilmington plant is a part of the Estain Engineered Polymers Division, and we produce thermoplastic urethanes. We're a manufacturer of urethane resin plastic, plastic resin, I'm sorry. The types of resin that we manufacture are those commonly used in medical devices, tubing, pacemaker headers, insulin monitors, things of that nature. Our product is implantable for a lifetime in some cases, for the case of the pacemakers, the coating, it's used for the coating of the wire of pacemakers and all kinds of new and upcoming technologies for healthcare.
Does, maybe that's a stupid question here, but does some of your growth here involve growth in job opportunities in the region as well?
Yes, it does. I've started with Lubrizol Advanced Materials, formerly Novion, back in 2006, and since 2006, I believe we've added somewhere around 20 jobs, and they're fairly well-paying manufacturing jobs. It's a good product, good company.
Great. I appreciate the answers, and it's fascinating information, I'm glad to see the kinds of things you're working on. So thank you for those responses. That's all, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
No other comments from the Board? Any public comments? Deputy Cockman, would you like to say anything? No?
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board grant the request of the new 207 Lowell Street Howland Development to increase above-ground storage of combustible products at Lubrizol Advanced Materials Inc., 207 Lowell Street.
Second?
A motion is made in second, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your support. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I guess with that, we can go right to communications. Are they ready?
Mr. Chairman, at the Board's May 10th meeting, you directed that a letter be sent, and we did that on May 14th to the legislative delegation, indicating that the Board had recent discussions relative to the merits of supporting House Bill 4374, an act to require product responsibility for collection, reuse, and recycling of discarded electronic products, and House Bill 726, an act relative to producer responsibility for mercury-added lamps. While, I wrote on your behalf that while generally supportive of the purpose of the legislation as set forth and the attached correspondence provided to the Board for consideration by Clean Water Action Massachusetts, selectmen are interested in learning your position on this legislation. They specifically want to know if there is any basis for opposing this measure. The Board looks forward to your response and as always appreciates your assistance. We've received one response to date from the members of the legislative delegation, and that was from Senator Tyre, a copy of which you have. He writes, "Thank you for requesting his views on these two pieces of legislation. As always, I am happy to assist the town with whatever information it needs to inform its decisions." Senator Tyre writes that you may know that he is a member of the Environment, Natural Resources, and Agricultural Committee, to which the legislature referred both of these bills. The committee reported favorably on H4374 regarding e-waste last November, and he voted in favor of that recommendation. Producer responsibility increases the rates of recycling of these dangerous materials while relieving municipalities a cost for a service in which they are not expert. This bill is currently before the House Committee on Ways and Means, where it has remained since the beginning of March. Should the bill make it to the Senate, Senator Tyre indicates that he would support it. House 726, relative to mercury lamps, is still under consideration by the Natural Resources Committee. The committee was recently granted an extension order to extend its consideration until June 15th, at which point it will either have to act or seek another extension order. His understanding is that the committee has not yet decided whether and how to proceed, and he's inclined also to be supportive for the same reasons as the e-waste bill, but he's reserving final judgment until the committee finishes its deliberation. I spoke with Senator Tyre's office today, who informed me that in fact, the committee just reported the bill out favorably, the one that references the mercury-added lamps. So that's the information that we have. Mr. Chairman, you had received an initial letter back in late April from Clean Water Action Massachusetts, asking for the town to support the bills. And as I said, you asked for recommendations from the legislative delegation, and we've only received the one response to date.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, on that note?
I'd like to address that if I could. I looked into this a little bit today, and maybe it's too late, but I'm going to read a brief sentence, and it states, "The principle of producer responsibility, also called producer takeback, shifts responsibility to brand owners and off of local governments. Takeback requirements create a powerful incentive to eliminate waste at the source and to reduce costs by designing products that are non-toxic, durable, and easy to disassemble and recycle. Companies that innovate more quickly will be more competitive than those that delay." The idea here being that it seems to me, and there's more language here that I could go on, but I won't, but it sort of repeats that theme that these bills incent the producers of materials to engage in a take-back program and/or engage in a production or manufacturing process that makes those materials less hazardous to the environment. I don't see a negative associated, I was looking for one, much like the increasing or the expansion of the bottle bill, we did come to the conclusion that it was not necessarily an improvement. I don't see any negative here, and that being said, I wanted to, ultimately, I wanted to make a motion that we, the town, write the letters in favor of and encouraging the support of these two bills. And so I do have language to create a motion if I may articulate one. I would move that the Wilmington Board of Selectmen vote in support of House Bill 4374, an act to require producer responsibility for collection, reuse, and recycling of discarded electronic products, and House Bill Number 726, an act relative to producer responsibility for mercury-added lamps, and further that the town manager's office craft a letter on behalf of the Board of Selectmen articulating our position of support to House Speaker Robert DeLeo and House Ways and Means Chairman Representative Charles Murphy.
Let's open that motion. Okay, we have a motion made in second, any discussion on that?
The only comment I would have, and I think I caught the entire motion, referring back to the original request letter that we had, I'm just wondering if it should be directed to our legislative delegation that, okay, yeah, that's because the sample letter was to go to Murphy and DeLeo.
That's why I wrote, I worded it that way. I don't see how it could be of any harm to CC the legislative delegation.
Sure. Okay. Add that, you want to add that?
Yes, yeah, if I may, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion made in second, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
We've also sent a letter to legislative delegation at the request of the Board regarding the erection of sound barriers on Interstate 93, indicating that the Board had received recent inquiries from residents concerned about the constant noise emanating from the heavy volume of traffic on Interstate 93. We indicated to the three members of the delegation that residents living in close proximity to the highway have asked about the possibility of the erection of sound barriers to mitigate the noise, similar to barriers that have been erected on highways throughout the state. On the Board's behalf, I asked the members to advise the Board of any plans the state may have to address the noise problem, and to request any assistance that they may render to help solve the problem. This letter was just recently sent out. We did have a call from Dan Parsons, the Chief of Staff for Senator Tyre today, regarding this letter, and he indicated to me that generally, the position that Mass Highway, or now called the Department of Transportation, has always taken on these issues is that if neighborhoods were already in place prior to the construction of the roadway involved, then they would tend to look favorably towards the erection of sound barriers. But when the roadway was there prior to the homes being built, that there really wasn't much of an appetite by Mass Highway to take on this project. So that's what he indicated to me, and again, I expect that we'll probably hear from the other members of the delegation as well, but to date, the response has been from Senator Tyre. And it's been a verbal one.
Okay.
You had brought that up at a meeting. Right, I would, I'm not terribly pleased by that response. If any other members of the delegation give us any different information, if we could get that in the future, I mean, I appreciate it. And then perhaps anybody who's watching tonight, I don't want to leave the impression that I've been flooded with calls about this, that's not the case, but I did field the question, and if anybody has any additional questions, needs additional information in that regard, I'd just ask that the manager respond to them and pass along whatever information we have, and if necessary, connect them to our delegation, that'd be helpful, which I'm sure you'd do at ordinary cost, but as long as we're, we have this floor, and we can publicize that. Thank you.
You have a copy of a letter from Catherine Craven, the Executive Director of the Massachusetts School Building Authority, that was sent to Charles Lyons, the Superintendent of the Shawshing Valley Regional School District, regarding the MSBA's approval for their renovation addition project for a new life sciences center at the Technical School. And they provide a copy of that notification to the various members of the legislative delegation for the five communities, as well as to the chairpersons of each of the five community Boards of Selectmen. Wanted to bring to the attention of the Board that the town received a federal fiscal year 2010 underage alcohol enforcement grant award. The chief indicates that these grant dollars will enable the department to continue to address the ongoing concerns of underage alcohol consumption and maintain all alcohol compliance licensing requirements. The letter came from Mary Heffernan, the Secretary of Public Safety and Security for the Commonwealth, indicating that the department would receive $4,872 in funding as part of the state's allocation for the underage alcohol enforcement grant program. Also, the Board has heard by now, I know that you've received this information from the Massachusetts Municipal Association, in the form of a legislative alert regarding the Senate's plan design provisions for municipal health insurance. Basically, the communities have wanted to have the same authority that's vested in the state to make plan design to health insurance programs, and what they got instead was sort of a hybrid of what they were looking for. The Senate did vote narrowly to adopt a municipal health insurance provision that offers communities plan design authority, but it includes many serious flaws, frankly, including binding arbitration, the adoption of permanent coalition bargaining, and a provision that only guarantees the cities and towns that receive 25% of the savings, with the rest up for negotiation and arbitration. So it certainly is not something that I've found much support for among my colleagues. It does exactly what the communities didn't want to have to go through. And so we've indicated, at least to our legislative delegation, that it's not something we support, and at this point, we've heard nothing in terms of what the House is going to do yet on this particular bill. We also provided for you a legislative alert from the Municipal Association, which again, I'm sure you and the members of the community have not only seen it here, but read about this in the local newspapers, and that is the potential of a loss of $680 million in expected federal aid, which could affect the state in terms of its 2011 state budget, where the budget itself could be out of balance by that amount of money if the Congress of the United States does not pass legislation to grant a six-month extension of higher federal Medicaid reimbursement percentages for state governments. Essentially, the state has been counting on this money in their revenue projections, and now there is a possibility that it won't be there. The governor, in his announcement back on June 8th, indicated that based upon his initial recommendation, they would have to impose a 3.6% across-the-board cut in all areas except direct local aid, Chapter 70 in the State Debt Service. However, as you know, the legislature would be making the final determination, and local aid has already been cut in their budgets by approximately 4%. So local aid would likely be vulnerable to any additional reduction in federal dollars. So that's where that stands, we've not heard yet what action is going to be taken when this thing reaches the full Congress. We do have a letter from Martha Goldsmith, the Director of the Office of Leasing and State Office Planning in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I realize I skipped a communication, but I'll continue on this one. In their search for lease space, this is through the Division of Capital Asset Management, and we bring this to the attention of the public whenever we get this, and in fact, we, I also provide copies to staff members that deal in this area, including Skip Moynihan. And in the past, when we've received these particular announcements, businesses from Wilmington have been able to, with space, have been able to bid on this property. DEP certainly is in Wilmington in large measure through these kinds of messages. And so the letter, it just notifies the chairman that DCAM, the state agency involved with these issues, has issued a request for proposals seeking a lease of space for a state agency in a number of communities, including Wilmington. The search area includes Burlington, Everett, Lexington, Malden, Medford, Melrose, North Reading, Reading, Stonemont, Wakefield, Winchester, Woburn, and of course Wilmington. The agency that is looking for 16,400 square feet of office space is the Department of Transitional Assistance. If there's anybody out there that's interested that may know of this space, we'd be happy to provide them with the information. The deadline for submitting proposals is June 30th, and you can go on a state website to view all of the solicitation requirements. And as I indicated, there is a letter as well from the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, specifically Fred Lasky, who is the Executive Director, who wrote that on behalf of the Board of Directors and Staff of the MWRA. He thanks us for our assistance and support during the recent water main break, and asked us to convey our thanks to all of those who were involved in this particular issue. As the Board, of course, knows by now, the town was not affected, but certainly, we put all of our emergency officials on notice. And in the past, when we've received these particular announcements, businesses from Wilmington have been able to, with space, have been able to bid on this property. DEP certainly is in Wilmington in large measure through these kinds of messages. And so the letter just notifies the chairman that DCAM, the state agency involved with these issues, has issued a request for proposals seeking a lease of space for a state agency in a number of communities, including Wilmington. The search area includes Burlington, Everett, Lexington, Malden, Medford, Melrose, North Reading, Reading, Stonemont, Wakefield, Winchester, Woburn, and of course Wilmington. The agency that is looking for 16,400 square feet of office space is the Department of Transitional Assistance. If there's anybody out there that's interested that may know of this space, we'd be happy to provide them with the information. The deadline for submitting proposals is June 30th, and you can go on a state website to view all of the solicitation requirements. And as I indicated, there is a letter as well from the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, specifically Fred Lasky, who is the Executive Director, who wrote that on behalf of the Board of Directors and Staff of the MWRA, he thanks us for our assistance and support during the recent water main break, and asked us to convey our thanks to all of those who were involved in this particular issue. As the Board, of course, knows by now, the town was not affected, but certainly, we put all of our emergency officials on notice, and we were ready to react. They also had a debriefing meeting at the MWRA, and they will continue to monitor and review their own response to this particular emergency. The Board has received a letter from Jane Lyman of Comcast, indicating that they are going to be providing a new channel, which our sports enthusiasts no doubt will appreciate. They are launching something called ESPN 3D, which will be available on their Channel 334 on their digital status service level, and will be viewable by customers who own a stereoscopic 3D television. I'm sure there are a number of those out there, and subscribe to Comcast 3D service. This is on the air now, for anybody watching the World Cup, they can probably tell us that it's an interesting feature. The network also will be covering a number of other sporting events, and this is, information is provided to us, as is the responsibility to do so by the cable providers. Chairman, the Board is being asked to consider a request from Kathleen DiTono and Matthew Richard, who live in Tewksbury, to use the Town Common on Saturday, September 18th, between 4:15 and 5:00 p.m. for the purpose of taking wedding photographs. They indicate that they are going to be wed at St. Thomas on that date, and believe that Wilmington's Common will be a beautiful location for their party to have professional pictures taken. They're not asking for anything other than 45 minutes to take pictures on the Common and by the gazebo. There's nothing on the calendar that would prohibit that. Mr. Chairman, if the Board is so inclined, we would send them a letter notifying them of its availability, but also advising them that the Common is a public place, as we always do when we don't control anybody else from enjoying the Common on that date.
Okay, and you said there's no conflicting dates?
No, sir.
Okay, we have a motion, questions, comments, or a motion?
Lou, to grant the request.
Second? All in favor? Unanimous?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I will. Mr. Chairman, we had a letter that came in today that the Board may want to act on prior to its next meeting, since the request is for a block party that would take place on June 26th, and the Board's next meeting is June 28th. Came from Kristen Stokes, who did apologize to the Board for bringing the request in today. She had hoped to have had it to the Board last week. She's looking to request a street closure of Jacob Street on June 26th for a neighborhood block party. They did it last year, and indicate that there were no problems or issues. She writes that all the neighbors are either attending or happy to have the street available for the party. She recognizes this is late notice, but hopes that they can continue on with their plans for the friendly neighborhood party. They would ask to close Jacob Street from Faulkner Avenue to Cunningham Street from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. on that date. They did in fact have a similar party last year, to the best of my knowledge, without incident, and if the Board is so inclined to approve the request, we would provide them with all of the information and the conditions by which they could have the party.
Sounds good. Questions, comments, motion?
I have no problem. I'd make a motion to grant the request as stated by the Town Manager with those stipulations.
All seven.
Favor? Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the regular business before the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. Public comments? New business, committee reports?
Nothing here. I'd just like to just bring up that the parade, Lou, I think you did a great job as far as putting it together, and all the people that, you know, with their time and all the groups that attended and the people that were part of it, and I think all the associations was great, great honor for Wilmington, and you did a great job. I think you, and the Town Manager, your two speeches, I got feedback. A lot of people were very, you know, grateful for the words that both of you said, and, you know, I did hear positive feedback on that also.
Thank you. Thank you, Ray. Lots of help.
Yeah. To that, to complement that, the monuments, the Killed in Action monuments, is that in fact what they are?
The MIAs and the Kias, yeah.
Were even more inspiring and impressive than I had expected them to be. It was a moving event, so thank you for assembling that. I do have a brief couple of comments to talk about the I-93 Tri-Town Task Force that recently met on June 1st. Was it June 1st? It was June 1st. There was a, the presentation of the draft of the Form-Based Code for the definition of what kind of construction can occur once the new interchange goes in place. And I won't go into great detail about what Form-Based Code is. We've been talking about it for several years now, but this draft is sizable, and I printed one out. I wouldn't necessarily encourage every person to print out a copy of it. However, I want to strongly encourage every resident to take the time to review the draft of the Form-Based Code. And the reason I want to encourage it is because the region that is affected by the construction of this new interchange will have an impact on all of our lives, economically and just really in the definition or the character of that whole district. And so this Form-Based Code really gives some structure and definition to what kind of buildings can go there, et cetera. And so it's pleasant enough reading, there's lots of pretty pictures, but what is being asked of the residents of the three towns, Wilmington, Andover, and Tewksbury, is for residents to go and review the draft and to make comments. There's a 20-day, I'm sorry, a six-week public comment period that ends on July 20th. So up until July 20th, all residents have the opportunity to go and review this code or the draft of the code, offer questions, offer suggestions, criticisms, whatever it may be, but this is the time to be heard, because, you know, after July 20th, more action will be taken, and we'll continue down the path towards defining how that region will grow and develop over time. So I'll be brief in terms of defining where the draft can be found. Most readily, I would direct you to the very cool, newly updated Town of Wilmington website, which is town.wilmington.mass, I'm sorry, town.wilmington.ma.us. Please go there. You will see a link down near the bottom of the page that reads "Tri-Town Development Area Form-Based Code." It's a six-megabyte PDF download, so as you hit that link, you may not see anything jump out right away, but it is downloading. Another way to get to the draft is to go to www.vhb.com/tri-townfbc. Did everyone get that? So obviously, you can contact Carol Hamilton, the Director of Planning and Conservation, if you have specific questions about the code, or you can contact Town Hall offices, and they can direct you to where the draft can be seen. But again, please, take the time, it's probably a matter of a half an hour of your time to download, view, read, browse through it, and make your observations and share your feedback with the committee, so that you can have an impact and a say in how this develops over the course of the next 20 years and more. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is that it on committees?
I just want to let Mr. McCoy know that we are planning on having the head of DPW and the police chief in to talk about the traffic that you had mentioned a couple meetings ago, I think. I just want to touch base with you, let you know that was still going on. And remind everybody to celebrate our symbol of freedom on Flag Day. Today is Flag Day, and just give thanks, remember that symbol of freedom. Important dates.
Sure. Just to let folks know that the Second Annual Relay for Life through the American Cancer Society, the Wilmington Relay for Life, will be held on Friday and Saturday of this week, which is the 18th and 19th, at Wilmington High School. You can participate through a donation or certainly get information on their website. It begins at, I believe, 5:00 p.m. on Friday and concludes on Saturday morning. The Board's next meeting is June 28th, and that also happens to coincide with the deadline for any resident to apply for disaster assistance from the flooding that began back on March 12th. So if you were affected in any way, you still have time to contact the disaster assistance folks, and probably the easiest way to do it would be to apply at this point by phone, and they can give you the information on their various websites. But the phone number is 800-621-3362. We mention this because at one point, the deadline had passed, but the folks at FEMA decided to extend the deadline. So it's 800-621-3362. And if they wanted to apply online, it's www.disasterassistance.gov. And the D and the A in that case are both uppercase, everything else is lowercase. Fourth of July festivities, just to give you advance, they do begin on June 28th, and they will go from then until July 4th. The Town Common, Family Day fireworks at the Common on July 2nd, and Family Day and the spectacular fireworks will be held on the Saturday, July 3rd. If you are seeking information on Fourth of July activities, it's really best to contact the Fourth of July headquarters directly, because they have the information. The number there is 978-657-8081, or you can go and get all that information that you need about the schedule of activities on their website, which is funonthefourth.com. That's all spelled out, funonthefourth.com. And that concludes the important dates, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Entertaining motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining, not to return to open session.
So.
Second. All in favor? Do you have a voice coming on?
Yes.
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 Yes. Unanimous?
Thank you.